Mr. Marone?
Hi, Commissioners, good morning. Item number one, inform the board that based on an email from Mr. Mike Cooper, Weems CEO, (noise) Weems was able to make payroll this week without any additional funds from the county. This was due to the distribution of the first quarter DISH funding and the cleanup of some old accounts receivable accounts. On Friday, Weems transferred $150,000 from their operating account, which leaves a balance of about $100,000 in that account, to the money market savings account, which is now has $300,000 in its balance. But the reason they do that, Commissioners, if they don't need that money right away, they can gain interest by transferring that money into the money market account. So they're doing it for two or three weeks. That's why they make that transfer, okay? And hopefully they'll get some more money in to next payroll and they won't have to touch that savings account.
So they're getting it out of the money market, their money market for the Weems?
They're putting some in.
What they did, they put some in and just leave a balance of 100,000 in operations and then they have 300,000 in the money market because they can get interest in that 300,000, Commissioner.
Yeah.
It's a way to earn a little bit more money. That's what they're trying to do.
Okay.
Item number two, inform the board that the Florida Department of Transportation has notified the county of the 2018 application cycle for small county road assistance program, which we know as SCRAP, small county outreach program, we know as SCOP, and county incentive grant program, which some call SCCP. FDOT strongly recommends that we apply for SCOP funds to complete Mill Road. Let me finish and we'll go back. Mr. Mark Currenson and Ms. Whitney Barfield will be working on these applications, which are due no later than March 15th, 2018. So you should contact them if you have any suggestion or questions about applications for the other two programs, which is the SCRAP and SCCP. Now, I have the Mill Road map up there in the board. There's been some calls, there's been some questions, some people are concerned, especially Commissioner Massey, knowing that some people are upset that we had to cut off the Mill Road project. And actually, there's someone in the audience that didn't want in front of her property paved, believe it or not, that she isn't going to be paved with this part of the project. So I just say that if you actually, there is where it's ending now, right here. It was proposed originally to end here, but we all know the budget fell short from the state, so we had to cut it back to here. What the state is saying, and when Dustin tells us to do something, that means they're probably going to approve it, is to take our SCOP money, our SCOP application, and complete this project. So after this cycle, we'll be, we'll end up here. It'll take longer to get there, but we'll end up paving the entire Mill Road as the original project was.
So let's have a motion from the board to go ahead and do that.
Yes.
Yeah, I make a motion.
Sir.
To apply for SCOP grant, SCOP funds to finish up what we've had to cut back.
Yes.
So we get that done.
Yeah.
We do have a motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So you can get Mr. Currenson and Ms. Whitney to go ahead and start working on that.
I will. And then you guys, if you guys, probably, you've got probably a lot of questions that comes up, you know, what, what can we do on the SCCP? What can we do on the SCRAP? You give them a call and they'll let you know so we get those applications in as soon as possible.
Okay.
But it will be sometime in the future years. It will not be, like, if we turn it in this year, it's not going to be funded.
About 2020, correct?
About 2020.
About two years out for the, for the five-year plan?
So, yes, five-year plan, so it'll be, it'll be, but this question, I wonder, is if Justin tells us to do, or Dustin tells us to do this, so when is construction scheduled for the first phase?
Now.
Now?
Now.
Well, it might be a gap of a year. Yeah. I don't know.
Well, if you remember now, it's usually supposed to be in about a year, but they've been taking it out farther than that.
Yeah.
And I know we've got the Highway Six, you know, County Road 67 project going on, and it's going to be 2020, 2022 before that gets the money into it.
I was going to ask Clay, because I know when I went to the last FDOT, the class, it was, what, they now separate engineering funds from construction funds. That slows it down a bit even more, correct? But that's not a good way to look at it.
Correct. Clay Kennedy for the record. One thing that I wanted to add and make sure that everybody understands, that last mile or mile and a quarter has already been designed, so there's no design. So really, all that they're going to be funding is the construction thereof.
The construction of it.
So, so it should, and I'm going to use air quotes on "should," it should speed up that process because there's not a design and it should, because it's, they've already paid for that design, they should fund the construction.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because they've already spent money to, to, to do that.
That's why Dustin is so important. That, that, okay, that makes sense.
That does make sense.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Item number three, if you're finished with that. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on a resolution and amendment for the SCOP funded for the Mill Road project. As the board may recall, it was necessary to submit an amended scope of work, which we've been talking about, to FDOT, as all of the bids received for this project was over the budgeted amount. FDOT notified the county that the revised scope was accepted and rebidding the project was not necessary. Thank you, Lord. The approved resolution and amendment is necessary to proceed with the project. So all is a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the resolution and amendment so we can move forward with the current Mill project.
Same move. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Item number four, board action to sign engagement letter with Robison Associates for the county's year ended September 30th, 2017, regular audit. A copy of the engagement letter, which states the expected services and fees is included in your agenda packet. So that would be the audit for basically 1617. Just want to make that clear.
Same move.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Item number five, why talking to Mr. Robison while providing an update on some outstanding issues? Mr. Robison informed me that his review of the, of the necessary information for the previous supervisor of election, Ms. Pinky Jacko, was overpaid by $3,000, $3,009.58. I informed the current supervisor of election, Ms. Heather Riley, of Mr. Robison's findings, and Ms. Riley shared with me a series of emails between her and Ms. Jacko. Based on those emails and information from Mr. Robison, all of which I've included in your packet, I recommend that the board authorize Attorney Schuler, after he confers with Ms. Riley and Mr. Robison, to send a letter to Ms. Jacko requesting payment. Board discussion and action. And Commissioners, I know you're going to ask, but Michael, isn't this really the supervisor of elections responsibility? It is, but if you look at those emails, I sense a frustration of, of, of being put off to some degree. I think it's what she's, she's experiencing. And she kind of turned to me and said, "What, what can I do? Where do I go from here?"
Have you got the emails?
It's in your packet too. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
So all, all the information that justifies Mr. Robison's statement that she does owe the money, that's in your packet, and so all the emails between Ms. Riley and Ms. Jacko.
I'd really rather not get into a big public discussion.
I agree.
I would like for the board to take action and move forward on this issue.
Same move.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We already addressed item number six. Number seven, the 2007 Ford truck assigned to the maintenance department is having electronic issues again. We changed the computer in that truck earlier this year. I recommend that the board authorize transferring the truck currently assigned to the building official, which was a used vehicle when it was purchased, to the maintenance department. Then transfer to GMC Terrain, which is assigned to administration, the vehicle that we drive in administration, to the building official. The county will then purchase a new SUV from the Sheriff's Association purchase list for the administration department. The purchase will have to be financed, as this is an unanticipated purchase, and the finance office will look for the best rate available. The 2007 Ford truck that's giving this issue on and on again will be sent to auction.
Okay. When you, real, real quick, Mike, when you're talking about assigning the building administrat, the building official's truck to maintenance, you're talking about courthouse maintenance?
Yes, courthouse, I'm sorry, I should have put courthouse maintenance.
Courthouse maintenance.
Yes.
And the current truck that he has is continually having issues, so you're talking about putting it in auction?
Yeah. It's handing me downs, Commissioner, because the truck that's giving us the trouble was the billing official truck years ago, you see? And we keep, we had to change the computer, we had to send it for another electrical problem, and it continues, it continues, it continues. It makes no sense to keep working on this truck. And what happens, it just doesn't start. He'll go to certain places, he takes the tractor over to, I'm sorry, come over here to carribel to cut the grass or whatever, it just, you know, it just doesn't start.
Then it won't crank.
Yeah.
Pleasure to the board on this issue.
I'm just doing hand-me-downs as, as we do, Commissioner, the rest we can.
Pleasure to the board on this issue.
Same move.
We got a motion by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
I address item eight. Thank you, Commissioners, item nine. And we are now at item 10. Inform the board that staff has received, Commissioner Sanders referring to earlier, a letter from Landmark Village Association, which was discussed at the December 5th meeting by Commissioner Sanders. In this letter, there are a number of requests that the association would like the board to consider. The first is to reactivate the Landmark Village Review Committee. Based on discussions with Commissioner Sanders and Mr. Pierce, the role of this committee was to review, view and offer an opinion on any permits relating to the, to Landmark Village turned into the county's permitting office. But as time has passed, the original members of this committee are no longer residents of Landmark Village or just not interested in serving anymore. If the board agrees to reactivate this committee, then the Landmark Village Association would like Mr. Tony Johnson and Mr. Barry Greer, both residents of Landmark Village, appointed to the committee. There are other requests made by the association that I will discuss at future meetings. Board action to reactivate the Landmark Village Review Committee and appoint Mr. Johnson and Mr. Greer, Barry Greer, to that committee. I think Mr. Greer is here. I've met him before, and I'm, can I say that's Mr. Johnson? Okay. So both of you are appointed.
My question, Mike, is you, as we're looking to reactivate the Landmark Village Review Committee. Should they not go to the P and Z meetings and address the concerns there as the committee is, is, as a P and Z committee?
Yeah.
It gets sent to the P and Z.
Is that how it was done before?
That's the way it, that's the way it needs to go because...
Not necessarily, because the problem with Landmark Village is that the S4 discussion is, are you, rules only and specifically unique to Landmark Villages. So we had people who lived in the village, who were familiar with the rules, who, I'll be honest, usually if there was an issue, didn't go to P and Z, it went to Department of Justice. If there was a variance issue. But sometimes, sometimes there's special unique circumstances in Landmark Village where they needed variance to be consistent with some of the other structures already there. So it would go to, it would go to BOA with a recommendation of Landmark Village Committee. Because P and Z, I mean, the problem with, not the problem, the situation with P and Z is they review single-family homes. Well, well, these aren't R1 homes. These are, these are S4s, so rehabbing an apartment doesn't go to P and Z. Adding a porch on an apartment doesn't go to P and Z.
So then they should go to BOA?
If there's a variance, they go to BOA, yeah. And, and we know that already. That's, that's part of the setup. We just, we use them as eyes and ears for what is, for what...
They're only, they're only an advisory.
They're only an advisory.
But what I'm saying is, they don't need to come to us with their advisory comments.
No, no, no. They're going to P and Z. All you do is point them. They're going to go to him.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So if there's...
You're still short-circuiting the process?
No, no, no.
Why, why should they come to him after BOA's already met on?
No, no, they go before, they, they gave us a recommendation before they go to BOA. We use them as eyes and ears for what, what the community wants.
I just don't want to circumvent the procedures and the protocol that's in place.
What it does, Commissioner Pierce, is, we've had this many years out there, and then, and I'm going to just say that right, everybody just died off, and nobody just served. And Mr. Ralph Dietz was on it, Mr. Millard Collins was on it, we had a lot of stuff. And that was back, and it really worked out good during the boom, when we had all the flippers come in and flipping these apartments, you see? And so now, they, somewhere about a wayside, it, it's lost its way. And the Landmark people feel like they need to have some kind of a say because the roof lines are not being, you know, just like David Butler just said. And so they will kind of like oversee and say, "Okay, you know, we see something and they're compatible," whatever. But it's...
So they would be taking their concerns to BOA, or if it's something with P and Z, they're going to take the concerns there if need be.
To Amy.
But they wouldn't be coming to us after these other two boards have met?
You're just saying, you'll never see it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that these volunteers that we have serving on those other boards are not circumventing.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want them missing the loop.
No. This is just part of the process because Landmark Village is an S4 district.
So their concern or opinion will be in the system long before it gets to BOA or P and Z, because that'll be part of the consideration.
Right. And I want them to be part of that consideration before these advisory boards make the recommendation to our board.
And see, the ordinance that governs the S4 district in Landmark, in fact, Michael, if you can get a copy of the S4 district ordinance that governs all of that and give it a copy to each one of the Commissioners?
Okay.
So they will know what we're talking about. And it's not circumventing nobody, it's just an extra pair of eyes and ears that, and, and Landmark feels like they need a voice again. And, and, you know, they want, they want revived. I don't have no problem with it.
Okay, pleasure to the board?
I don't have no problem with it. I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and do whatever.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Item number 10, here I go recycling again. Inform the board that I will be transferring two of the older iPads to mosquito control. These iPads would allow Mrs. DeWitt Polis and Mr. Scott Tucker to complete their reporting while they're in the field. Any data expenses from these iPads will come from the mosquito control budget.
Same move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number, Clay, this is more of some of the further projects we have going on. An update for each one. Inform the board that there's been a slight delay in the St. George Island pier restroom project. There are some issues with the property ownership that the Division of State Lands is trying to reconcile with the Florida Department of Transportation. If and when there is a resolution, I will update the board. Just to let you know, that project is on hold. There'll be a pre-construction meeting with the contractor at Lombardi's Park on Thursday at 1:30. Ms. Whitney Barfield and I will attend this meeting, and I will update the board as to, as to the expected project timeline. That contractor, I didn't write any report, is Anderson Construction out of Panama City. So I got an email while we were here waiting. You want to, that's one of these?
That's an example. So that one that's in St. George Island, we're starting to hope it gets done, but that's an example of a NERDA. It's two years behind schedule. If we can't resolve the issue, who knows? That fund may go to Island View, who knows? Because we're trying to keep the money in front of the county.
And actually, we've got two state, state agencies fighting as to who owns the property. Believe it or not, that's what the problem is.
While we're, while we're stopping talking about that, I'd like for the board to make a motion to send a letter to both the Division of State Lands and Department of Transportation asking them to please try to solve this. That's exactly right.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Continue on that.
And the third one was the bids for the East Point Fishing Pier restroom. They were open on Thursday, December 14th. Four bids were received and all exceeded the available budget. However, the bids will be evaluated and then the state will seek supplemental funding. So even, even though they were above budget, I got an email saying they're going to try and find the money to get them done anyway. And they're, they're evaluating the four bids.
So every project in Franklin County has been delayed?
Yep.
Every project?
Yeah. We, we got a little bit of progress with, um...
But this is, this is going on statewide. This is the problem. You know, we...
With Lombardi's.
This process has been so delayed in every county that the bids and the estimates that county staff and state staff created four years ago are no longer valid in today's economy. This is a, it's a problem that I, I don't know what's...
But I mean, I just see it...
Yes, they're all delayed, yes.
As you stated, Alan, they may take money from one of these projects and put it to Island View or what. I'd like to see these projects completed.
Well, we want...
People expect these projects. We've been talking about it for two years now, and just to do away with one of them, either they need to cut back on the scope of work or whatever we need to do to bring them within budget, but these projects need to be completed.
And that's, and that's the goal. Yes, sir.
And I tell you, the one, to me, based on the emails, that's most in danger is the St. George Island pier restroom project. I mean, it's, they're fighting over quit claim deed that, you know, they didn't, one department doesn't think, the other one had the right to. I mean, it's, I'm like, come on, y'all, just get it together and just let us move on. I'm sorry.
It seemed like they had worked all that out before they proposed these projects.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, we closed the project.
Yeah, I understand.
But still, I mean...
We thought we had a deed.
I know.
It can't be this difficult to decide who owns the property unless...
So when you're writing this letter, Mike, try to amplify, emphasize that...
About, we don't want to lose the funding.
We don't want to lose the funding and we want these projects completed as, as quickly as possible.
Yes. I will. All right. Item number 13, inform the board that the Franklin County ship 2014-2015 annual report submitted to Florida Housing has been approved, which is a good thing. Every time they approve an annual report, we move right along. We did 14 already. Item 15, remind the board that Wednesday, February 10th, is the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Day. As we know, this is one of the best opportunities for Commissioners to assist their county and FAC in lobbying efforts to protect home rule and unfunded mandates. This year, many events will be held downtown at the Challenger Learning Center right off Cleveron Plaza, which is just steps away from the Capitol Building. And I quote...
It is right across the road.
And I quote from the association, "The association hopes to make this a more walkable conference for all attendees. Please contact Ms. Cheyenne Crusant in our office regarding registration and arrangements." Item 16, at the December 5th workshop, the board moved public comments to the beginning of the meeting. That action seemed to work well and allowed for a better flow to the meeting. Is the board interested in doing that for the regular meeting starting in January 2nd? If you guys don't like it after March, I could switch it back, but I, I think we should give it a try and see how it works out.
That's pleasure to the board.
I like it myself. That's, you know, I sit on a lot of committees and that's the way they do. They take public comment at the very beginning.
Mm-hmm.
So you'll know what items that the people are concerned about and take it up in your discussion.
There you go.
And, I mean, I like it myself.
So we have a motion?
Yeah.
Need a motion and a second.
One more motion. Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? My only, my only issue with this, Mike, is, is we need to improve the amount of time that we have our agenda put out there.
Yes.
So that the public have the ability to, either through the website or whatever, where they can look at the agenda and then come to the next meeting.
Okay.
First thing in the meeting and, and have those things on their radar.
Yes. Okay.
So, so we, we need to start getting an agenda out a little bit earlier, because sometimes it's like Monday before we finalize that and the meeting's Tuesday, so...
Well, the public gets the agenda on Thursday.
Okay, they do.
You guys get it half on Friday and then you get the final version on, on, on Monday after, you know, that's usually my fault because my reporters use the last.
We can try it and see how it works.
But, yeah, the public gets theirs on Thursday. If you want me, I could, I could step it up a day to Wednesday.
No, Thursday's fine.
Right.
I mean, you've got Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Monday, you've got five days there to review the agenda if you have comments for that following Tuesday, so...
What I'll probably do is to, not to tie up your department heads, I'll put, I'll leave them first, then put public comments after that, limit that to three minutes, and then we go on with the revision of the agenda. Okay? We see how that works, and you ask, tell me how to change it if you'd like. Ooh, my final item. Item 17, inform the board that your administrative and planning zoning offices will be closed from December 22nd to the 26th, returning on the 27th for Christmas holidays. Merry Christmas from your staff.
Merry Christmas to y'all.
Yeah. Any questions for me?
Any questions from Mr. Marone from the board?
One, one. In talking about the DOT projects, Department of Transportation projects and the grants that they have, like I said previously, we have a grant in the making for Highway 67, County Road 67, but I want to make sure that when they address it, they're, the way the project's supposed to be, I think it's funded for 2020 and 2022, somewhere up in there, but when the project, when, and this is another thing like Mill Road, we, all of our culverts, we put slip, slip liners in them the last time we paved 67, and they're failing. And, and the road's in bad shape. And so I want to make sure that it is given to the engineer and everybody that makes sure that they look at replacing the culvert. Because now, what they're supposed to do is mill and grind, you know, mill the, mill the road and put the base back down. That's a good time to replace all these culverts and stuff. I just want to point that out.
Okay.
And all, so...
Never mind. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, you know, and so we may have to do one of those projects with scrap or some of them to add on to 67 if we don't already have that in the works.
Okay.
Any other comments from Mr. Marone from the board?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Mr. Marone.
Merry Christmas, Michael.
Next would be Mr. Michael Schuler, County Attorney, report?
I have no report from the board. Merry Christmas, and I have you.
You too.
Good to you. Merry Christmas to you, Mr. Schuler.
From Mr. Schuler. Mr. Jones has a question for you?
I have a question, sir.
Just because of timeframe is the only reason I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
A month and a half or so ago, we voted to do the Wayne's contract with TMH on a ninety-day basis.
That's correct.
Under my thinking, that would be the beginning of February. Do you reasonably think we're going to be past that then, or should we look at possibly an extension of a month, or, I'm just asking your opinion?
I would be hopeful that we're finished, I have a list of outstanding questions that I have submitted to CHC, some of which they've answered, that I've asked them for further clarification, and there's other questions they've not yet responded to. With the holidays, I would be hopeful we could have this completed by January, but my plan was to see what the status was at your next meeting on January the second, and if we need to consider an extension, I was going to address that at that time, Commissioner.
I'm just being overeager, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm just being overeager, I'm sorry, I just want to...
I understand, yes sir, we're working on it.
Thank you.
And now we're down to Commissioner's comment?
Only one, Mr. Chairman, that I have, I just want clarification. There's been some misinformation out here in the public about the county commissioners supporting FSU's effort for eight-point-three million-dollar project. I want clarification on that, Alan, you can give me the clarification on it, because the Board of County Commissioners has not voted and approved anything. It's something that FSU is going on their own about, just like the University of Florida did, remember the projects?
Right, now, FSU has submitted a project in their name.
In their name?
It's in Franklin County, I mean, I think the board voted to say you can submit it, but we didn't, we didn't review it.
We didn't review it, that's right.
And we have not done a letter of support?
No.
We have not done a letter of support on it.
And I have no idea how it will stand in the...
Well, I don't like for the board to get beat up on something they don't need to be getting beat up on. And just like the Wayne's contract, just like the Wayne's contract we're doing on CHC, we're trying to get a solution here. The board needs to be out of the hospital business, and that's what we're trying to do. I mean, we've been targeted, saying, well, the board don't have no business in the hospital business, well, that's what we're trying to do. But we, at the same time, we don't, like I said at the meeting the other day, we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. You know, we've got to, we've got to do things, certain things, to ensure that, so that was my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Any other Commissioner's comment?
And Merry Christmas.
Any other Commissioner's comment?
I would just like to reiterate, Mr. Chairman, if I could, the deal with FSU is, I understand, and I tried to explain to any that have actually asked me about it, all we really did was say we're not in opposition to it. You know what I mean, it's kind of like, you know what I mean, this is the thought, this is what they're doing, you know, how do you guys feel about it? We just didn't declare any opposition to it.
Right.
We don't control the funds anyway.
Right, I mean, I think, let me put it this way, I saw the support was that we need to do something more than shelling, and this project is more than shelling. It's a proposal to see if they can develop oysters and other habitats or other ways that will make the bay productive, productive. The University of Florida has not come forward with any proposals of that kind of thing, so here's FSU saying, well, we're willing to try something else. We said, good, try it, let's see what happens, you know, that's how I, that's how I read it.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Massie, any comment?
Everybody just have a Merry Christmas.
And I too would like to tell everyone in Franklin County, our citizens and constituents, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and...
That's the way to wrap it up, I was wondering if anybody was going to say Happy New Year.
And words now to public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, I've got five hands, and everybody run to the podium. One at a time, please.
Almost good afternoon, I'm Cecile Hans, five-twenty-nine Mill Road. And I realize this is like way late in the game to mention this on Mill Road, I've not been an advocate for paving of Mill Road, primarily because it's an impact to the rural way of life that's what's so enjoyable about living in Franklin County on the New River. But I recognize we're moving forward, it's going to happen, blah, blah, blah. So my concerns are to make sure that the stormwater runoff is not redirected on our property to create flooding issues and so forth. And so I've been talking with Clay, just in the audience this morning, and hope to at least look at the plans, and if we need to alter something, so that it's not just pouring water onto our property to, you know, maybe we can make some adjustments on that. But that is a major concern I have, because once you pave something like that, and you forever change the landscape...
Apply.
And, you know, right now, a lot of times the water sits on the road, and over time, it just evaporates or, you know, soaks into the lime rock. But, you know, I recognize this could be an issue if we get some fast-flowing stormwater off a paved road that's, you know, engineered.
And that's Cecile's on that first corner there, Clay, she's right there on that first corner next to the river.
Okay. And there was a sizable ditch that was adjacent to our property, on the east side of our property, that was filled in some time ago, and I tried to get DEP to look at it, and they couldn't figure out where the ditch was, so that was like, you know, fifteen years ago. But it was huge, it was deeper than I am tall, but that thing was filled in, so it altered the flow already, and I'm concerned about additional alteration of the stormwater flow, because we're already getting more than we used to. And the other concern I do have with it is, right now, even in bad conditions, they're speeding on that road, whether it's a log truck, Division of Forestry equipment truck, stop sign there at Buck Signing, people run it, you know, it can be hunters, it could be residential people, service people, whatever, but that, people speed on that road already, so this is just going to increase that pattern now. And I pray that, you know, the county and the Sheriff's Department will take action and try to reduce that.
They're going to have to.
It's, I mean, it's already a problem, but when it's paved, I can just see people really boogying that way.
That's where you're going to have to put fifteen miles an hour down there by those houses and stuff, yeah.
So, but I do appreciate y'all taking my comments and taking those into consideration, and I wish y'all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year also.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Come forward, please.
Ms. Brenda. Yes, Brenda La Paz, Mayor Carabelle, and I want to welcome y'all to Carabelle, once again, bringing the government to the people, as Commissioner Sanders always says. I want to invite you all to attend a free ethics training, believe it or not, right here in this room, on Thursday, January the twenty-fifth. I know Franklin County sponsored it for us last year, and I just want to invite you, the Northwest Florida League of Cities is holding that mandated four hours of training here, and it will start at seven-thirty a.m. registration and last till about noon. And Jerome Miller, attorney from Destin, is going to be the instructor, and I'll send the registration information to Mr. Michael. And then also, tomorrow, I'm going to be meeting here with the Franklin County Traffic Safety Team, and if you, with your approval, I will recommend the, to them, to recommend to the District Three Traffic Safety Specialist he meets with us, your need for signage, the appropriate warning signage out there at the old FDOT laydown yard, we'll be supportive of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so that's it, and I just want to say Merry Christmas from Carabelle and a Happy New Year, okay?
Merry Christmas to you.
You too.
Thank you.
Come forward, state your name for the record.
Hey, good afternoon, I'm Bert Bolt, and I'm from Alligator Point, I live on Gulf Shore Boulevard, ten thirty-nine Gulf Shore Boulevard. And I just wanted to add a few comments, just as a major in the study of biology, when I was going to school for pre-med, et cetera, I became extremely aware of the universal issues of ecosystems, and that big word is what I'm wanting to support about the gentleman who was going to do some very special studies along that area, and I certainly appreciate the concerns of the quality of the oystering and so on. There was a couple of gentlemen a few meetings ago that talked about establishing an association to just look at watch care over the Apalachicola Bay, I think that is just huge. And I want us to just keep an open mind on the universalness of Apalachicola Bay and its world-famous issues that it's there, and to do everything we can possibly do to keep that bay open and alive and vibrant. I realize there's a lot of support with regard to tourism in this area, but I believe it's a, it's a hand-in-glove, comprehensive approach to all of that. Also, with the point number sixteen in Mr. Moran's presentation about public comments at the beginning of the meeting, I got the sense that that was, let's try it, see how it goes, type of vote, and I think that's very appropriate. I did want to say that sometimes after these public meetings, or during the public meeting, you oftentimes gather information that you didn't know at the beginning of the meeting. And one of the issues I wanted to discuss was with regard to developing the contract proposal for the hospital management company. There were many issues that were discussed that were unsolvable by those folks here who are laymen relative to hospital administration. I would like to support the possibility of adding a reference to the proposed contract with this hospital management company, that in the issues that are very unsolvable or very difficult, that you refer to the guidelines and the standards of practice of Medicare, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid, that has been around since nineteen sixty-five. These are excellent standards of practice for the management of many, many entities in the field of medicine. And sometimes, when there just is not a solution, perhaps using that standard of practice that gets us out of the way of ourselves may be appropriate to consider, and I wanted to remark about that. I want to wish you all a very, very Merry Christmas, and I wanted to tell you that I've certainly gained a great deal of education sitting at your feet here in these commission meetings this past year, and I look forward to celebrating Christmas with you this year. Take care, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, any other public comment? Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, meeting is recessed.
Adjourned.
Adjourned.